Good evening. I'd like to call the May 12, 2025 Planning and Zoning Meeting to order. Ms. Commissioner King, would you please lead us in the pledge? Thank you, Commissioner King. Good evening. My name is Sandy Griffiths. I'm the Chairperson for the Planning and Zoning Commission. I will be presiding over the Commission's deliberations on hearing items this evening. The Planning and Zoning Commission sits in an advisory capacity to the Town Council. As such, the Commission reviews planning and zoning issues and forwards recommendations regarding these important issues to the Council. All members are appointed by Town Council and volunteer their time. If you wish to speak during the call to public or on the public hearing items, when you are recognized by the clerk, please come to the microphone, state your name and address. I will ask that you direct your pertinent questions to the Commission through the Chairperson and not to staff or individuals within the audience. A three-minute time limit will be imposed. I would like to express in advance the Commissioner's appreciation for fostering an atmosphere of respect and cordiality this evening. This evening's proceedings will be conducted as follows. First, I will read the public hearing item into the record. Staff will then present the agenda item and their recommendations to the Commission. The Commission will question staff. The applicant will be invited to address the Commission and answer questions from the Commission. The floor will then be open to comments from the public regarding the hearing item. After the public comment has been closed, the item will then return to staff for clarification or comment, then to the Commission for comments and/or a motion and a vote. Roll call, clerk, please.
Chairperson Sandra Griffiths.
I'm sorry?
Chairperson Sandra Griffiths.
Here.
Commissioner Phil Bordone.
Here.
Commissioner Artur Rutherford. Commissioner Brianna King.
Here.
Commissioner Joe Hewat.
Here.
Commissioner Sandra Laney. Vice Chair Ted Erb.
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you, clerk. Call to the public. At this time, any member of the public is allowed to address the Planning and Zoning Commission on any issue within the jurisdiction of the Commission, except for those items scheduled for the public hearing on the agenda this evening. Those wishing to address the Commission must register their name with the clerk. The Commission's response is limited to responding to criticism, asking the staff to review a matter commented upon, or asking the matter be put on a future agenda. Again, public comment is limited to three minutes unless additional time is granted by the Chair. Clerk, do we have any public comment?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who perhaps did not register for public comment and would like to make comment? Thank you. Agenda item five, announcements. Commission, do we have any announcements? Commissioner Laney? Commission? Thank you. Item seven, public hearing items. We're switching the agenda this evening. The first public hearing item will be GPA 24-004, Pronghorn Unit 21, consideration and possible action. Making the presentation is Mr. Chris Norlock, Development Services Urban Planner II. I will now open the public hearing. Welcome, Mr. Norlock.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, we didn't do approval of minutes.
All right, go ahead and do the minutes and then you can go into the public hearings.
How many times can I forget the minutes?
All right. It's all right.
As many as I want. Thank you. Thank you for having my back.
And we can do them after, but as a, as a housekeeper, let's get them done before.
Let's just do them right now while they're on the forefront of my mind.
Thank you.
Approval of the minutes from the October four, uh, Oc- October, April 14, 2025, regular meeting minutes. Do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to accept the minutes from meeting April 4, 2025.
Thank you, Commissioner Erb. Is there a second? Thank you, Commissioner Rutherford. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, I'll call for a voice vote. Yea?
Yea.
Any nay? The minutes passed unanimously. Thank you, clerk, for having my back. Mr. Norlock.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, Commission. Uh, this is a general plan amendment and zone map change for Pronghorn Unit 21. Um, I'll present them both together and it'll be separate motions. And if the GPA doesn't go forward, then the ZMC cannot go forward either. The site is at APN 103-01-493, just north of Parkview Drive and east of Antelope Meadows Drive. The site is approximately 23.86 acres. The site was originally dedicated by the applicant to the Humboldt Unified School District, school site with PL, Public Land, Land Use Designation. After 20 years and no school planned for the site, the applicant ended up doing a land swap with the school district. This is a notification map of who's notified of the project. The outer larger blue circle is who is notified of the project by the applicant for the neighborhood meeting, which is a thousand-foot buffer, and the inner darker circle is a 300-foot buffer of properties notified by the town of this public hearing tonight. The current land use designation is public quasi. The general plan request is to change the land use to low-density residential. This designation allows 1.4, or 1.124 dwelling units an acre. The properties to the north and south follow the same land use as low-density residential. The property, properties to the east are in the county and have a land use of estate residential, and the green strip there just to the west has a land use designation of open space and is next to, um, Pronghorn Unit 9. The current zoning of this property is PL, public land. The applicant is requesting a rezone to residential, single-family, limited, planned area development. The properties to the north, south, and just west across the open space are currently zoned residential, single-family, limited, planned area development. This is a layout presented that will have the 48 single-family units with one entrance there and a secondary emergency access in the dark gray slash black area, if you can see that. Um, the development proposed would come out to 2.01 dwelling units an acre, um, and the setbacks of the lots would be 20 feet in the front and rear and 10 feet on the sides. Staff recommends approval of the GPA and ZMC, and I am here as is the applicant for any questions you might have.
Norlock, Commission, do you have any questions for Mr. Norlock? Wow. Yes, Commissioner Bordone.
I find it interesting. So, am I correct that the developer back in the day, because this development's been there some time, had to dedicate this as a school site at no cost to the school district, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So then I'm guessing state law, when they decided to not build a school, required them to get some level of fair market price back when they actually disposed to the property?
Um, I believe what happened was the school board got together and they proposed a land swap.
Okay.
I don't know what land that includes, but there was a land swap that was agreed upon.
But if this wasn't asked for in the original development by the school district, who now doesn't need it for a school, it would have been included in the overall development of Pronghorn Ranch?
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Norlock. I appreciate it.
Any other questions for Mr. Norlock? The applicant is here. You said, please?
Yes.
Good evening, Chairman Griffiths and Commissioners. My name is Greg Allen. I'm with Allen Consulting Engineers. Uh, if there's any questions you have, we'd be glad to answer, but there was one, uh, error, I believe, on the setbacks. It should have been 10 on one side and five on the other, and that's what was shown on the plat.
Mr. Norlock, would you like to comment to that? Because that's not what our package says. Are we?
Yeah, that was what was in the, uh, I believe it was presented in the narrative, but if it is five feet, then that is, my apologies.
Yeah, it should be 10 and five. Other than that, everything was fine. There's any questions?
Okay. Any questions of Mr. Allen?
Sir Allen, I'm looking at the map that we have, plat map. It appears that these new lots are much smaller than the existing lots. Is that correct?
No.
It looks that way.
They're, they're actually is, is large, if not larger than the existing lots. These would be the, the largest lots that are in the Pronghorn Development.
Commissioner Laney, if I may, I believe what you're, you might be seeing is the, the building envelope. So that would be the setbacks there. That might be what you're looking at.
So they're, they're theoretically the same size, even though they look much smaller?
Yes. There's two lines there. The darker line that's in the inside there is the building setback lines, and the line that's just outside of it is the actual lot line. And they, they vary in size from about 22,500 square feet, uh, to about 36,000 square feet.
Another question.
Sure.
Uh, we did not have any elevations in our packet. I'm presuming, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the houses that are going to be built on these lots will be the same models that exist now?
No, they're, they're, each one of the subdivisions that surround this were, you know, could, could have been built by different builders. That subdivision is kind of unique in itself, but there will be five different houses that they have planned right now and...
Aren't, that aren't like what's there now?
They're, they're, they're similar. They're actually higher quality. These would be the most expensive homes in Pronghorn Development.
What about square footage? Are they going to be smaller, the same?
No. No, they'll be, some of the, they'll be the larger ones, as far as I know.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. I do have a question. Mr. Allen?
Oh, I'm sorry.
In our staff package, it says that there will be between two and four model homes.
Twenty-two?
Between two and four. Two to four.
Two to four. Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Uh, I, I think they have. How many? Five?
Ms, Mr. Snyder, if you'd like to make comment, please come to the microphone. Please state your name.
Ben Snyder, Chair Sandra, and everyone, thank you for having us. So, the model plan would be, as is mentioned, two to four. Uh, we, we sometimes have fixed models and sometimes we have production models, but there are actually, as Greg mentioned, five actual different varieties of very nice high-end homes that we're planning to build in here.
And then multiple elevations of those plans.
And each one has like three or four elevations. So there's a good variety of...
So where I was going with my question to Mr. Allen, it says that the development, there will be between two to four model homes. There's...
I, I think that must have been in reference to the number of actual homes that they were going to build for people to look at.
I, correct. I do agree, yes. However, there was no model home layout, no model home connectivity to where the model homes are going to be on this plat map, and no parking as to the model home area. So that concerned me. Can you enlighten as to the model home?
I can clarify where they're going to be. There'll be the, the four homes, four lots that are in the, on the far west side, not the first lot, the next floor.
Yeah, and I was just telling Chris, we're not going to do a model complex, so we won't have dedicated parking. At least that's the plan right now. So these would be production models, if you know what I mean by that. So they can, someone can look at them, they can still purchase them. And, uh, now, if we decide to do a model complex, because we're probably 18 months away from being able to do that, we would follow all your codes and rules for parking and everything if we did dedicate some models.
So for now, you're building two to four model homes for the public to visit, view?
And, and what we call typically, uh, production models would be, they're also available to be purchased, and then we could build another nearby and, and view that way, rather than a dedicated model complex. But if we decided we wanted to do a model complex, we certainly would provide the parking that's required and follow all the rules of a dedicated model complex.
Thank you. That was a concern of mine. I have, don't leave yet. So, we know that, um, the one ingress and egress was dedicated as an emergency ingress and egress, correct?
That's correct. That's the darker one on the right side, next to the retention base.
Conversation with CAFMA, and they are not opposed to this ingress and egress being opened and used as a secondary standard ingress and egress for the community. Would you be willing to do that?
I, they would consider it. I, I honestly would rather just keep the one entrance, because there's not that many homes and, and that's, it just puts more traffic along that, that one area. But if, if the, if the commissioners would like that, that would be something we could certainly do.
So how, how are you addressing the concern from the public comments that they wanted a secondary ingress and egress for your development?
The, the dark line is the secondary ingress, egress, but as far as CAFMA is concerned, that's, that's in relationship to an emergency ingress, egress.
But they will remove that condition, and you are welcome to use it as a full secondary ingress and egress to your development.
Okay.
Okay. So, so in our conversations with CAFMA, as long as we provide for the 125,000-ton increased size of the truck, road standard, that we were fine.
Correct.
So that doesn't necessarily need to be paved. I'm not sure that you said that.
Correct.
But we would meet their, their requirement. Yes.
So you would be willing to open that as a second?
She's saying that it would be open all the time.
No, I, well, when we met with them, it was going to be for emergency only. There's a couple of homes there, and really, didn't really flow real well. And so, as long as it was there for fire, in case there was a fire, and it's available, and it's to their standard, the road would be built to their standard. So it'll operate functionally for CAFMA properly, but on a regular day in and day out, everybody would come in through the western access, the main access.
But again...
Okay.
You had public opposition to only having one ingress and egress?
Which is why we added that one.
Would you be willing to open this?
To make it permanent?
Yes, a secondary ingress and egress.
I, I think we, well, CAFMA didn't require, and it doesn't add value to the flow of traffic or the, or the quality of living there. So I, I think my, my idea would be to bring it up to their standard as required for 125,000 pounds or more vehicles, and have it available, but not on a regu- like, not have it be a regular in and out.
That's fine. Thank you. I wanted your comments.
Okay, thank you.
Just to help you maybe feel a little better on that, that is also a public utility easement, and there's utilities that would be in, in that, uh, access way also.
Yes, Commissioner Erb.
I have a question relative to that fire access, and, and this comes from a, I guess, a point of concern of mine, because I spent 33 years in the fire service. And access and water supply and getting into homes during emergencies certainly are a priority. I think turning it to a permanent access would be beneficial to the residents, certainly, that live there, in the event of an emergency, not just for fire department access, but for people to use, not just in an emergency, but able to use in, in, come and go on a normal day. And the reason I bring this up is, I, I don't know that, and maybe it is that all the homes within Stone Ridge are sprinkled. I know these 48, that's one of CAFMA's conditions. It says those homes are sprinkled.
Yes.
Residential fire sprinklers. Um, I think the concern from the community is, um, and again, maybe somebody can answer this question for me, if all the homes are sprinkled, but that's, a home being sprinkled doesn't do anything for wildland urban interface fire that could come into that community, and then you have conflagration of, of fires from home to home to home. And in a panic, we've all seen it, California is a perfect example, of people at a moment's notice, in a panic, needing to be able to leave their community. And with one, even though I understand this is, could be used for emergency, but if you've got fire coming in and out of that, and you have, I don't, I don't know if the width would be the standard width of the other streets or something smaller to allow for just fire department access, um, my concerns would be in a, in an event like that, for example, if people chose to use that, or the fire department is using it for access, just because something, um, necessarily isn't paved, it's meeting their weight restrictions. The, the fire code requires that it be an all-weather surface and this and that, and I live in the Quailwood Development where they did this very similar thing. We have one point of entrance in and out of the, the entire community of 1,200 homes. There is an emergency access and egress, just like you've got here, but it's dirt. It hasn't been maintained by anybody. It, it is not gravel. It may have been engineered to support the 125,000 pounds over 24-inch square foot, or 24-inch by 24-inch for their, uh, wheel alignment on their vehicles and weight, but if it's not, my concern is, I see that those things don't get maintained like they're supposed to. And it's not just a matter of can it support the weight, but is it an all-weather surface? And to me, that is asphalt, concrete, or compacted gravel, not just dirt. And from what I've seen in some of these other communities, because of the lack of maintenance on those over time, they, you know, sediment and all sorts of other things interfere with that, and it doesn't really then no longer meet the requirement of an all-weather surface, which can complicate fire's ability then to use it as an emergency access point, let alone people trying to, to leave their, the residents at the same time.
Would you feel comfortable then if we agreed to make that a paved surface?
I certainly think paved, whether it be asphalt or concrete, would be better than just gravel or dirt, certainly.
We, we would do that.
Yeah. If, if that would make everyone feel better, we could pave it. We weren't planning to. We were going to use AB, but frankly, the cost of the road is mostly in, in the preparation, the AB, the compaction, and to pave it's not that much more.
Right.
So we'd be happy to pave it.
Okay. Can you tell me what the width of that was going to be? What the planned width was? Was it 20 feet?
It, it's 20 foot minimum.
Right. Curb to curb, or edge to edge?
Edge to edge.
Okay. Thank you.
Chairman, I have a question, if you don't mind.
Thank you, Mr. Allen and Mr. Snyder, but don't leave. Yes, Commissioner Hewat.
Uh, yeah, don't leave. Guys, I had a question. Oh, yeah. Uh, are these roads being offered for public acceptance? Is that the plan?
Yes.
Meaning that the town will maintain them?
That's correct.
Will that include the fire access, the emergency access?
I would think not. I don't think they will maintain, will they?
All of what you're asking, hi, I'm John Latier, the town engineer. All of what you're asking are very good questions, and if you decide to put that in as a condition, we can evaluate that with the engineering as the project moves forward.
Thank you, Mr. Latier.
Thank you. And so, uh, so then, uh, this, uh, emergency access, as you've got it laid out now, would only serve the lots within this development. It doesn't connect to other phases, is that correct?
That's correct. That's correct.
Um, and it would be gated with an OX box?
Yes.
I'm assuming for the fire department, if that were the case.
That's, yes.
Is there any restrictions that are gonna be required, uh, these are public-accepted roadways, um, they're gonna be maintained by the town, uh, is there any restriction for on-street parking that's gonna be included in the CCNRs?
It depends on the width of the, the road that we're paving.
Uh, I, I mean, for the, for the regular circulation pattern for the traffic in the development. The, the reason why I'm asking the question is, is that, um, oftentimes what we find is, with an emergency access, once it's made a clear, convenient, all-weather, or paved, permanent access, is that you get on-street parking, you get things that are stored in public rights of way, and then the fire department can act, can't actively use it in the case of an emergency. So with it being gated, we find, in the, in the developments that I've been involved with, with it being gated, it's, it's more dedicated and left aside for those purposes, and then accessible by emergency vehicles during an emergency, as opposed to on-street parking, people with their storage outside, maybe trailers and things like that, where they could not effectively use it in the event of an emergency. So that's the reason why I ask if-
Yeah, all, all of the, uh, subdivision streets that are in the project are thirty-two feet wide, which does allow on-street parking.
Okay.
On one side.
However, sorry, Ben, again, our CCNRs only allow daytime parking and no overnight street parking.
Okay, and, and again, the reason why I'm asked the question is, if it is opened up as a permanent access, whether it's an exit-only or ingress, egress, and it's not gated, that there'd be something in place that would restrict any obstruction of that, if it's considered an access out in the event of an emergency? That's my thoughts.
Yes, we would not allow any parking along the emergency.
Yeah.
Absolutely not.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Commissioner Hewitt. I have another question in the letter of concern from the public. Can you discuss and talk about the single-story homes versus the two-story homes? Are you building two-story homes?
There, there is, one of the five models is a two-story, but we typically don't sell a lot of two-story, so I think the majority probably will be all single-story.
Are there only certain lots that would support a two-story home, Mr. Snyder?
They, they, all forty-five would support two-story, and this was something that, in the neighborhood meeting, we discussed, the elevation, what's really nice is that this site sits below the other sites. Remember how we went through that? So if we did, sorry, if we did two-story, um, it's pretty limited, and it wouldn't, you know, it wouldn't be, uh, anything different than what we've done in Pronghorn before.
Okay, thank you. One other concern to address, please, there were some public comments about additional landscaping going along Parkview Drive.
Is that in reference, I mean, we will have full landscaping on Parkview Drive adjacent to our project, but are you in reference to that, or the landscaping going to the east to Pronghorn Ranch Road?
I only have my landscape plan, and I'm looking at the landscaping that's adjacent to Parkview Drive, that they were concerned and wanted some additional landscaping there.
We're meeting the, the standard requirements of those, I, I, and if, if that's what they're in reference to, is, is what we're showing on the plan, that's the standard requirements, you know, of the town of Prescott Valley.
Okay, so no consideration for maybe a few adjustments?
Well, one thing we're kinda proud of at Pronghorn is, we've, we've been very heavily landscape-oriented, and the entrance will certainly have a robust amount of landscaping.
Perfect, thank you, Mr. Snyder. Commission, any other questions for the applicant, or Mr. Norlock? Thank you.
I, I, when I found out these lots were all sprinkled individually, I wanted to ask, is all of Pronghorn that way, or is it just these forty-eight homes that-
No, just these homes because of the size of the homes.
Okay, because of the larger size, thank you. Okay, that, couldn't figure that out from the package, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Allen, thank you, Mr. Snyder.
Thank you.
Chairman, I have a one other question for Mr. Latier, if he has a moment? So, uh, Mr. Latier, in, in reviewing some of the proposed conditions for approval, they talked about a stop condition, you know, accompanied with a stop bar, kind of the generic, you know, signage and so forth to support the access. Um, my, my question is, is that a recommendation from the town, or would that be a recommendation that you'll require, uh, sealed by the project engineer, in this case, Mr. Allen?
Um, that was, that was a recommendation made by the town just in reviewing the plans. Um, as the project moves forward, the engineering detail will be quite a bit more complete, um, as, as that project moves forward. That was something that was identified in a review comment, uh, for them to include in the engineering plans.
Oh, perfect, okay, yeah, that answered my question, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Latier. Clerk, do we have any public comment on Agenda Item 7B?
Good evening, my name's Dave Arner, and I live in Pronghorn Ranch on Talking Iron, and I've, uh, I've been in the community for five years, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you all about this, because I really believe that part of the things that we do for our community is to provide homes for people that are moving into this area. And one of the things that we are lacking are some nice, bigger homes that professionals can move into the area with, and bring their families with, and, you know, doctors, nurses, chiropractors, those type of folks, that bring in fairly decent income into the area and help our communities to grow. Uh, that is a beautiful neighborhood that'll be right there, and one of the great things about the neighborhood itself is the bigger lots, that's gonna bring in some bigger homes, some more area there. You know, I'm glad that it's not being built like my neighborhood is, where there are sixty-six hundred square foot lots. I'm really happy to see that we're gonna do some bigger lots in there, less density, allowing more people to get moved in, to have some higher incomes perhaps, and bring, perhaps bring in some businesses to the area as well. One of the, one of the things that is lacking at the Pronghorn Ranch location are some, some businesses that are closer by. So if we can get some people that are moving into the area that would have businesses that they'd like to bring closer to home, that would be a great opportunity to do so. And that particular site, being the school site, that was gonna bring in a lot of traffic, especially during certain times of the day, there'd be a lot more traffic on the roads and so forth. In a neighborhood such as this, there'd be far less traffic than what a school site would ever bring in. And, uh, and again, like I said, it's just nice to have some bigger homes in the area, not high-density, but low-density homes. Uh, this, this, uh, site was dedicated to the school, the school opted not to go forward with it. You know, Mr. Snyder is the owner of the development, and I think he should be able to do with that land as he wishes, and I'm happy that he's bringing in some larger homes into the area.
Thank you, Mr. Arner. Clerk, any other public comment? Hold on one second, sir.
No, Madam Chair, but if people would like to speak, if they could speak their name.
Are there any audience members that did not register that would like to make public comment? Please come forward, sir. If you would state your name and address for us.
Von Sang, seven nine six one East Rusty Spur Trail.
I'm sorry, can I have your name?
Yeah, Von Sang. I wrote you a letter.
Yes, sir, and the, the team has the letter, and thank you for coming up to the microphone.
Uh, just a quick, uh, update, that secondary entry, there's a head wall and about a six-foot drop-off, so that little secondary roadway, you really do need to look at, because it's also over a bunch of drainage pipe. So they got some engineering to do there. Uh, as far as landscape, when I first bought here, the original map showed all of, of that street, both sides, getting landscaped. So I, you know, I disregard the one owner's pay guys, you're letting him just landscape, you know, two-hundred feet, it's not carrying it to the end, not carrying it to the park all the way through. Come on, guys. You know, if you're gonna make a project, pay for something, landscape. The rest of this stuff, boy, oh boy.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Von Sang. Are there any other public that would like to make comment?
Thank you for allowing me to address you tonight.
Please state your name and address.
My name is Lisa Bartlett, and I live at seventy-six twenty-eight Shimmer Lane in Prescott Valley, with my husband in Pronghorn Ranch. We don't have any objection to the landowner developing that ground, as long as all the, um, the engineering and, uh, drainage issues are, are taken care of properly. Our concern is that the developer wants to just make this plot part of Pronghorn Ranch. It was taken out of Pronghorn Ranch, and now arbitrarily, he wants to put it back in. It's my understanding, you look at that map, you see all those little houses, and every one of those houses, just like your house, someone owns it, and they own the ground that it sits on. So the person who you're thinking is the owner of Pronghorn Ranch really is not anymore. Those fifteen hundred people that live there own Pronghorn Ranch, they all own their little part of it. It's my understanding in Arizona, with an HOA community like we are, you need one-hundred percent agreement of the property owners to make this kind of a change on an HOA. And I can tell you tonight, he does not have that hundred percent agreement. And the people are adamant about it, so if I were you, I would let him go back and get his hundred percent agreement from his property, property, he sold those properties, that would be just like saying Bill Fane owns Prescott Valley. But people sell things and they give up ownership. Uh, additionally to that, sometimes there's buildings that I believe he was involved with over behind Roberts Market, that had a nice layout for apartments, and it turned into something different. And people don't trust that he's gonna build what he says he's building.
Ms. Lisa, please keep your comments pertaining to this public hearing item. Thank you.
Okay, well, anyway, I think you should send him back to get water permits, saying that he's got water, because he can't just arbitrarily come and take it from Pronghorn Ranch.
Thank you for your comments, appreciate you coming up tonight. Is there any other public comment? Please come to the mic and state your name and address.
My name is Robin Thomas, and I'm at, um-
Into the mic, please, thank you.
My name is Robin Thomas, and I'm at, uh, seven seven nine eight East Welsh Mountain Drive, and my house backs right up to this new development, and I'm only one voice, but I just have to say I object to the forty-eight homes compared to the other, the other side of the new development. That just looks really, that just looks really crowded to me. Um, I don't know if those are the actual, that's the actual size, those homes are gonna be, and why does it have to be forty-eight homes? Why can't it be, you know, less homes there? Um, with the additional homes, there is gonna be more traffic there. You consider the homes, and if each home, house has two cars, that's ninety-six more cars, it's gonna be going down that short little road on Parkview to get to Antelope Meadows, and right now, it's, um, trying to get out of Antelope, trying to get onto Antelope Meadows, or even to cross that street is difficult because of an electrical, um, box that sits out there, and the way the, um, the stop sign is, oh wait, that's, that's on my street, sorry, but even on that, even on that side, the, uh, just trying to get out is hard. Um, and with more cars, I can just see more accidents there coming out. Um, is this gonna be a gated community, is that what I heard?
No.
Oh, okay, good, okay. Um, I'm glad, I'm glad that, that, that that was brought up, that there's gonna be two access roads now?
Yes, ma'am.
Good, 'cause that was gonna be really difficult for us, having one road right behind our house going in and out, and I'm glad there's gonna be another ex, um, access road. If that, if that house is in the way by the, um, the other, the emergency access road, why not just take it out? If that's, you know, gonna be a problem there? Um, are there gonna be any RV garages?
We can certainly ask the applicant to make comment on that.
Okay, 'cause we, when this originally, um, came out last summer, we had put in, we had put in there and asked that the homes behind our street, yeah, behind our house, those first five houses, we, um, that, 'cause we understood that they're gonna be facing our direction, we originally asked that they don't have, that they do not make any of those homes with RV access. Did I say that right? Any of those garages gonna have RV access?
Please, please speak to the commission through the mic.
Okay. Uh, we asked last summer that any of those homes that are gonna face Prong, um, face the new, the old development, not have RV access garages.
I'm not quite sure how you can put that into effect, but-
They just said if you have any concerns or any comments, to put those in, so that's what we did, we just said, please don't have any of those homes facing our direction.
We can certainly ask the applicant about the RV garages.
Okay.
Thank you for your public comment.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to make comment?
Hello, my name's Brian Harmon, I live at seven seven eight four East Welsh Mountain Drive, uh, I'm lot number five sixty-two on your map. Robin is five sixty-five, no, five sixty-four. Uh, when we came to this development, my wife and I, we moved here, we bought a place here twenty years ago on Pronghorn, over on Shimmer Lane. Then we decided to go ahead and we, uh, one of the salesmen called us, said, "Look, I got a good deal on a view lot for you. If you guys wanna come out and take a look at it, we got a view lot for you. You need to come out, it's twenty-five thousand dollars." So naturally, my wife and I drove out here, and we decided to go ahead and buy the house with the view lot, okay? And that was because they were gonna put a school there. And if you go into the map at the clubhouse right now, even the map that's existing there that shows all the lots says "school," there's supposed to be a school there. But they decided to come in there and build, what, forty-eight homes, and like Robin said, two cars per home? You know how much traffic we're gonna have down there? You know how many problems I already have with people walking between our properties from down below, that little walkway where they're gonna put the driveway and all that? We have people walk through there all the time, people come, they're walking between our houses, looking through our white iron viewpoint fences they put up, so we have a view. They put white iron up for our view, so we have views. Now they wanna take our view away with, they said, "No two-story," well, how big is a RV garage? I have an RV, forty-foot diesel pusher, you know how much, you know how high that is? That's as high as a two-story house. Go look at the houses that have RV garages, and look how high they stick up further than their houses. Now, if Mr. Snyder wants to hand me my twenty-five thousand dollars back for my view lot-
Brian, please speak.
He could build the Empire State Building back there, far as I'm concerned. But I was led, misled to believe that that was gonna be a view lot- But I was misled to believe that that was gonna be a view lot, or a school.
So are you in opposition of this development, or in support of?
I'm not in support of it, no. I don't want it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Have a great day.
You too. Thank you. Any other public comment? We did receive two letters. One letter was in opposition, and it was from a Ms. Sue Hill-Gonner. The other letter that the commission has was from Mr. Von Sinek, and he did make public comment. So, thank you. At this time, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Allen, would you care to come back and make comment on some of the opposition comments?
Yes. Do you wanna tell me which questions you want me to answer?
No, you heard the speakers. What would you like to address, sir?
Thank you. As far as the RV garages, the plans that they do have, do have RV garages on them. So that's what is planned, and that's what we showed them at the, you know, citizens meeting also.
So are there certain lots with the RV, or can any lot handle it?
Any lot could have it, with the size, you know, that it's on, and it meets all codes, and should not be a problem at all with the building department.
Thank you, sir.
And one other thing that we do wanna mention is, Mr. Snyder has agreed to... He's working with the city on a special project in that, on this site and the detention basins, to make it so that our runoff that comes onto the site can be used to decrease the amount of water that we're taking out of the groundwater table. And in fact, in this particular site, with what the engineers who are helping us design that are, we would be having a positive effect on the groundwater table. And the benefit of that is that they are telling us that we will also, with existing state laws, we would be able to get credit for the amount of water that we're putting into the ground to help on our, you know, groundwater aquifer.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Commission, any questions for Mr. Allen? Commissioner Hewat?
Yeah, thank you. Not for Mr. Allen specifically, but Mr. Norlock, maybe you can clarify something for me, and apologize. It's been a long time since I served on the commission. You stood the county, so you gotta bear with me for a minute here. When we talk about view sheds and view, it's my understanding that, other than requiring and meeting setback requirements, there is no regulation specific to zoning to protect the view shed. Is that correct with the town?
Besides that and height limit, that's correct.
Okay. All right, so there's nothing here as a commission that we should base our decision specifically on view shed?
That's correct, just an entitlement process.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Erb?
It's not a question, but I think we need some clarification this evening, because we've talked about the emergency access road, or ingress egress, a couple times, a couple folks here on the dais, plus some concerns from the audience. And I've heard two things stated as possible fact, so we need to clean this up, because they both can't be true. Right now, what we're looking at is that the alternate ingress and egress is for emergency use only. We've agreed to, as a condition, to be paved and possibly gated or removable bollards so that people aren't using it for parking and what have you. The other issue that was brought up was that somebody had commented in the office, or, excuse me, in the audience, that it would be a second access point, no different than the primary access. So I need us to clarify that, in which direction, so the audience understands. My understanding here on the dais is, this is an emergency access and emergency egress for residents only. It will be paved, support the required weight limitations for CAFMA, and potentially could be gated, or some form of physical barrier to keep people driving through it in a non-emergency situation.
That's correct. That's the way we understand it also.
Okay, thank you.
Can I?
Yes, Commissioner Bordone.
I just wanna follow up on that. So I've heard some discussion about opening this as a secondary access. I just wanna share a concern about that, okay? Can I talk to the engineer, town engineer, real quick? Bring him up, Mr. Allen. Thank you very much. Would this really need a secondary access?
A secondary access in terms of traffic operations, not necessarily. If the commission were to make that a condition of this project to move forward, that's something we could have them include in their traffic engineering report. We could have that updated and finalized, to include that as a secondary access.
The reason I say this is, I like the idea of paving it. I thank the applicant for agreeing to that. I have a little concern about just opening it up as a physical access point from the standpoint. When you do that, and it's not needed, and there's, you know, this diversion of traffic, it won't get used, quite honestly, because traffic is going to head west to the primary north-south connector. So I just, if the commission wants to try to go that direction, fine, but my opinion is, I was glad the discussion was brought up to identify what kind of surfacing it was, and what kind of access it would be. But I caution against just setting it up as a secondary access, because it really creates an access point hundreds of feet to the east of the primary access point, might not really be used by the community. That's just my opinion. So I just, I like that the commission has clarified, you know, the paving of it, because I agree, sometimes those secondary access points when they're not... Sorry, the emergency access points, when they're not paved, deteriorate over time. So I like that paving. I like definitions of emergency access being able to be open, should there be the need. But I also caution against, like a knee-jerk, hey, let's do a secondary access, when the engineering doesn't really support that. So that's just my comment. I wanted to follow up with Commissioner Erb's questioning. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bordone. I do have a comment back to the access. What are the stipulations that this doesn't support a second ingress and egress for the As a standard, open ingress and egress? How do we know that?
Well, in terms of traffic operations, the amount of traffic that would be generated by the community would be distributed to the two access points. Evaluating and just looking at what we have here on the map, I would anticipate that the traffic operations would support having two accesses, if that's what the commission wanted to do. I think that having the single access that is shown along with the emergency access would also work.
Thank you, Mr. Latier. I guess where I was coming from, and I've seen so many developments where they've only had one ingress and egress, and for the community's sake, and like Commissioner Erb said earlier, I feel we should do our part to have a second ingress and egress for the safety of this community, and not just for an emergency purpose only. But again, I will go in the direction of the commission as to how you wanna handle it. I can go either way.
Chairman, I have a question.
Madam Chair, if I could offer, Chair and Commission, one element with the emergency access, as you're discussing that, that's a relatively recent requirement by CAFMA. I think when the original Pronghorn Ranch was laid out, I'm not sure that was a requirement. So when a development comes in of this size, based on the number of homes, that's where CAFMA would step in and require the second emergency access. So in this case, this is a little bit of a retrofit to a condition that was kind of laid out for a different purpose, maybe in a previous plan. We see that in some of our developments, as we're evaluating them. So the element of having that second emergency access might be a relatively recent standard to try to apply, and we're working with the developer to apply that to this condition.
And the current fire code requires a secondary ingress and egress for communities larger than 35 homes. In this case, that's not a requirement, because they're all sprinkled. Commissioner Hewat, you were gonna make comment?
Well, you just answered my question.
I took your...
Yeah, you took my thunder, sorry. I do have a point of clarification, because this nice young lady in the back here brought up a comment where, and I think Commissioner Bordone might have touched on it. She had mentioned, or there could have been a misconception, that this secondary access, emergency access, whichever way we go on this, as far as the stipulation, would only serve these lots in this particular phase. Is that correct? It would not connect to any other phases?
No, that's correct. It's a dead end, would just be a looped circle there, so it wouldn't make any sense for anybody else to go in.
Well, you're right. I'm seeing the obvious, but I just, I thought I heard a comment to say, "I'm glad we'll have another way out, and there really isn't another way out for anybody else, only for the people in the community in this particular phase." And then I had another question that maybe Mr. Snyder might be able to clarify for me, because a question was brought up about the property and the fact that it was designated as a school. Was it, I'm assuming it was designated as a school outside the boundary of the development?
No, that was... I'm glad you brought that up, Joe. That was somehow a commentator misunderstanding, because someone said that this was not included in Pronghorn, and in fact, it's always been part of the 640 acres, master-planned, approved community. So there would be no need to annex it back into the HOA. It's already part of the HOA.
Or do some sort of a replat, where you would need to get 100% of the properties, and so on and so forth, right?
No, we don't need any votes. It's always been, and always will be, part of Pronghorn.
You're just plating an additional phase, is what this is?
Correct. And I will tell you that the school would have driven a lot more traffic than this will, and the buildings would have been higher than even some two stories in there, just as a side comment.
Okay, and then my last question for Mr. Allen, just, man, obviously, you're prepared to do whatever impact analysis with regard to traffic, drainage. I'm sure there's a drainage report that's gonna be, because I know there were some questions about drainage, a master drainage for the site, just so that we know what's happening with the retention or detention and the site drainage off the site. Imagine all this is gonna be part of the development and required by the town?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, any other questions? Commissioner Erb?
Lots of questions tonight on this. What I need clarification on is Track J. So the retention-detention pond that's out there now is Track J. Was that retention pond, or detention pond, whatever it is, and maybe this is, the city engineer can answer this, was that sized for, and is it currently used as retention or detention for the entire portion of neighborhood in that area, prior to these 48 homes? Or was it there to accommodate for runoff for the school? And is it sized for one versus the other? Do we have an issue with the size of the retention pond, having it originally been planned for a school, versus now we're 48 homes? And the runoffs, obviously, could be different.
The runoff is sized so that it will take the whole, the entire Unit 21.
Okay.
But it...
Regardless of what's there.
But the reality is, it has the volume that will take all of Unit 21, but most of the area could not get into that basin. And so, but it was, and so what they are doing is taking a larger percentage of the area that is downstream, and controlling it in the detention basin.
And then for the town engineer, maybe you can answer this question. When that was built, somebody in the audience had brought up concerns with if the secondary emergency access is going over drainage culverts that feed this detention pond. Were they obviously built to withstand and accommodate the weight requirements for CAFMA versus having to be re-engineered to support that weight?
Yes, the current condition, we will have to evaluate, based on the recommendation that comes out of the commission. The process right now is that the zoning change includes a preliminary development plan along with that, and when the project, if it were to be approved and move forward, the final development plan would include all of the engineering elements. We would get those finalized.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Latier. If there are no other questions, I'll bring it back to the commission for a supportive vote, or a vote in denial of GPA 24-004. Commissioner Laney?
I bring up, if I bring up a stipulation, and I wanna add it to the project, does it have to be voted on by everybody?
We can make a motion to put it into the proposed conditions of approval, and then it could be voted at that time, correct? Stephen?
You're correct.
Thank you.
Then I would like to make a motion for a stipulation. I would like to move that the emergency access road be constructed as a permanent-access secondary road.
So a permanent ingress and egress to the community?
Correct. No, no.
No bollards, no close-to-emergency traffic only?
No, just like the other road, the other access, the other ingress, egress. There's two.
Commission, any comments on Commissioner Laney's motion?
I understand that it's a full-access roadway.
Do we have a second? I'll second it. All those in favor of adding the proposed condition to the list of proposed conditions? Clerk, will you please call the vote?
Commissioner Rutherford?
No.
Commissioner Hewat?
No.
Commissioner Laney?
Yes.
Vice Chair Erb?
No.
Commissioner Bordone?
No.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Griffiths?
Yes.
Motion fails, sorry, four to three.
Thank you. I would like to propose adding a condition of approval, that the CAFMA letter from September 10th, 2024, be included in the conditions. I know we all received a copy of that. I think it would make it much clearer and more concise to have that as part of the So I'd like to make a motion to include the CAFMA letter of September 10th, 2024, into the proposed conditions of approval. Is there a second? Yes, I said it, September 10th, 2024.
You want the... Can you restate the condition? I think she's...
I'd like to add the CAFMA letter dated September 10th, 2024, to the proposed conditions of approval. It was a very concise letter, to the point. To me, it didn't have any overreaching conditions. It was just to standard, but it wasn't listed in the conditions of approval.
And just to clarify for the commission, that was emailed to us, it wasn't in the package, so.
Oh, sorry, yes, but you all have it.
Okay, that's one of the problems, is that the clerk does not have it, so.
Okay. That's one of the problems is the clerk does not have it. So.
We all, we do all have it.
Okay.
We all have it. Clerk, will you please call the vote?
Do we have a second?
Yes. Commissioner Bordone?
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Rutherford?
I go.
I.
Commissioner Hughat?
Yes.
Commissioner Laney?
Yes.
Commissioner Bordone?
Yes.
Vice Chair Erb?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Chair Griffiths?
Yes.
That passes unanimously.
Thank you. Clerk, do we have a motion to forward GPA 24-004 to the town council with the proposed conditions of approval?
I would make a motion to approve GPA 24-004 to forward to the town council for approval with an added condition that the emergency access as proposed would be permanently surfaced with paved material, pavement material.
Second.
Clerk, will you please call the vote?
Chair Griffiths?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Bordone?
Yes.
Vice Chair Erb?
Yes.
Commissioner Laney?
No.
Commissioner Hughat?
Yes.
Commissioner, Commissioner Rutherford?
Yes.
That passed.
GPA 24-004 has been approved and will be sent to town council with the attached conditions of approval. The next item on our agenda is 7A zoning map change 24-005. Pronghorn Unit 21. Making that presentation is Mr. Chris Norlock, Development Services, Planner 2.
So these were, as, as stated previously, this was an all-comancing presentation. So that has already been done.
Commission, any other questions regarding zoning map change dash 005? I would like to make a point that these same conditions be added to zoning map change 24-005. Do we have a motion for approval and/or denial of zoning map change 24-005?
Chair, can we just, you're doing great. I just want to make sure. Can we clarify? There's no other public comments real quick, just in case. I know how this happens with GPAs and thank you.
Do we have any public comment on our zoning map change?
No, chairperson, we do not.
Is there anybody in the audience that did not register that would like to make public comment to zoning map change 24-005? Absolutely, this is zoning map change 24-005. The public comment is open. But when you get to the microphone.
I just want to clarify something.
Men, address, please.
Robin Thomas, 7798 East Welsh Mountain Drive. You just took a vote on the ER access, access road. Did that fail or pass? That it's going to become a permanent road?
It failed to open it up as a permanent secondary access.
Okay. Can I ask why? I mean, I know you just all voted, but.
No.
No, I can't ask why. Okay. All right. And just to clarify one more thing about why there needed to be 48 homes, I wasn't given an answer.
That's not up to our purview as to the number of homes it meant with the zoning and the layout and the density.
Okay. I can't ask for a lower, lower number of homes?
You are certainly welcome to go back to the developer, yes.
Okay.
But that's not a decision to be made here this evening.
All right. Okay. Thank you.
You're very welcome, Mrs. Thomas. Any other public comment on zoning map change 24-005? I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to approve zoning map change ZMC 24-005 from PL-PD to RL.
Excuse me, Commissioner, but I think we do have one more speaker and I'm sorry. She was, she was late in raising her hand. Why don't we let her?
My apologies.
It's okay. I just happened to catch her hand.
Didn't see it.
I rescind my motion.
And.
Just put it on hold, please. Thank you.
I will open up public hearing again.
I, I think this is more of a question.
Speak into the microphone, please.
Kathy Harmon.
Perfect.
7784 East Welsh Mountain Drive. This is to change the zoning? This is to change the zoning behind us?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm, I'm confused though, sorry. Earlier, we were told it was always part of Pronghorn and it still is. So why, what needs to be changed? I'm just confused.
We will have the planner answer that for you.
So the first motion was for the land use designation and so that needed to be changed from public to low density in order to allow homes and in order for these to align with the zone map change, which is now going from public land to basically single-family homes, to allow single-family homes for this to be plotted.
Okay. So as it is right now, it's not part of Pronghorn? It's not part right now? Or is this zoning?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Snyder. It's part of the HOA, but, but this is basically to change it from the public lands that it is to now to single-family home lots, which is what they're proposing now.
So the school was always part of the HOA?
Mr. Snyder, we're going to have to have you at the microphone, please. Sorry. Thank you.
Sorry about that. So when you develop a master planned community like Pronghorn Ranch, which encompasses a two-mile tall by half-mile wide, 640-acre portion of land, we do what's called a planned area development. And this 24 acres approximately has always been part of that 640 acres. It was intended to be a school and we actually gave it to the school. The school didn't need it, never planned to build on it, so it remained vacant for decades. What we're doing here today is not bringing it back into Pronghorn because it's always been part of Pronghorn. We're just changing the zoning from public lands, which would allow a school site, to residential low density so we can put these nice 48 homes on it instead. So that's, I think, the right explanation?
Thank you. I'll close the public hearing. Bring it back to the commission for a motion. Mr. Commissioner Erb?
Yes, Madam Chair. I restate my approval that we approve and move forward the zoning map change ZMC 24-005 from PL-PD, public lands, to RL-PD, residential low density.
With our.
With the former conditions attached as well.
Perfect. Thank you. Is there a second?
Make a second.
Thank you, Commissioner Hughat. Clerk, will you please call the vote?
Commissioner Rutherford?
Yes.
Commissioner Hughat?
Yes.
Commissioner Laney? Commissioner Bordone?
Yes.
Vice Chair Erb?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner, uh, Chairperson Griffiths, excuse me.
Yes.
Thank you. That passes unanimously.
Thank you. Is there any further business?
Make a motion to adjourn?
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for attending.